All right. Good evening, council. I am going to call this special city council meeting for October 12th, 2020 to order. Per the governor's emergency proclamation 20-28, the city of Auburn is prohibited from holding an in-person meeting at this time. City of Auburn Resolution Number 5533 designate city of Auburn meeting locations for all council, board and commission meetings as virtual. All meetings will be held virtually and telephonically until King County enters into Phase Three of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington's phased reopening plan. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right. First on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Excuse me. And I would like to thank Councilmember Sterns for bringing this forward to our attention. Mayor's proclamation, whereas the second Monday of October is commonly celebrated as Indigenous Peoples' Day in many states and jurisdictions across the United States. And whereas the city of Auburn is adjacent to the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, a federally recognized tribe whose membership is composed of descendants of the Duamish and Upper Pualap people who inhabited Central Puget Sound for thousands of years before non-Indian settlement, and whose leaders signed the treaties of Point Elliott and Medicine Creek. And whereas the city of Auburn recognizes the Indigenous people and Native American tribes have made and continue to make invaluable contributions to the diversity, arts, knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, and economy of the state of Washington, and their historical and cultural contributions, particularly those of the Muckleshoot Tribe, have substantially shaped the character of the city. And whereas in 2019, the city of Auburn passed the Inclusive Auburn Initiative to eliminate systemic causes of racial disparities in the city and to promote inclusion and create opportunities for every resident in the city, which includes promoting policies and practices that ensure equitable access and opportunities for Indigenous peoples. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, mayor of the city of Auburn, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2020 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Auburn and encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to recognize and celebrate the thriving culture and value that Indigenous peoples add to our city. Dated this 12th day of October, 2020. And here to receive the proclamation tonight from the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe is Walter Pacheco, and he is the cultural liaison. Mr. Pacheco? If you would like to say a few words, and you might be muted. Not sure.
Good evening. My name is Walter Pacheco. I am the cultural liaison for the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. In my 42 years working for my tribe, I have watched not only our community grow, but I have also witnessed the growth of the city of Auburn. I want to thank the creator for this special day. This day, like every day, is a special day as it signifies our time. The seasons have dictated what things we needed to do in our community. Again, time is significant to our daily lives. And each day, it is important to us as we carry on our relationships in this world we live in. Our ancestors have taught us that our relationships with our world are very important. And we need to nurture a balance with it so that we may have harmony with our lives and the things that we rely on to live productive, deserving lives. Over time, we have had to learn from each other what is important, not only to us, but to everyone and everything. We have also learned that as we go from day to day, that we are weaving our web to assure that our communities are strong and vibrant communities that recognize how important we are as a community. The city of Auburn has been our neighbor since its inception. Although we have had struggles in developing our relationship, we have recognized that as neighbors, we are stronger if we are working together. Our connections are vital to our continuity to work together. As human beings living together on this planet, our connections and understandings are vital links to the success of our productive efforts. Indigenous Day is a day that we have been striving for in the recent past. And the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, as the Indigenous people of this area, would be proud to have a day officially proclaimed as Indigenous Day. It would be a day that is important to our people and would recognize the significance in our struggles to be respectable and not to have to look upon a past that was not conducive to improving relationships. We thank you, the mayor and the city council for this wonderful day as it earmarks our efforts to work together. We will have these memories that bring us closer together in achieving the harmony our communities need to be successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco, and hopefully next year we'll be able to do more of a celebration and in person.
Great.
Well, we will get the proclamation to you so that you will have have it for your records.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for joining us this evening. Please give our highest regards to the Muckleshoot Tribal Council and all of your members.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You all have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. This is the council rules of procedure. City council to amend council rules of procedure 3.1H, 4.1, 10.1, 11.2B, and 16.1 that were amended on August 3rd, 2020 during the city council study session through when King County enters Phase Three of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington's phased reopening plan and virtual and telephonic participation in council meetings. We have a motion. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor explained that these, once again, are amending our council rules of procedure to continue our virtual meetings through the Safe Start program. This amendment also includes to allow audience participation through written form. And we have now actually changed the email address from our city council directly to a email address that is publiccomment@auburnwa.gov. And all written statements must be received by 5:00 PM of the day of the regularly set city council meeting. And this continues on with our comments, concerns, or testimony to council. So allowing persons to address the council by means of the same method. And also again, allowing our telephonic and virtual audience to attend meetings and allow written comments for public hearings. And also again, this is in effect until we enter into Phase Three of Governor's Safe Start Plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Do not see any, so all those in favor of the consent agenda, please unmute and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The consent agenda passes, and we have no other business for the city council meeting tonight. So council, I will in a moment adjourn the council meeting, and we will wait a moment or two and then go into the study session for this evening. So I will adjourn the special city council meeting and turn this over to Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sean, are we ready to go?
Give me just one moment.
No problem.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, I'm ready.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, everybody, and this is our city council study session for October 12th, 2020. And once again, we are conducting this meeting virtually and telephonically per the governor's emergency proclamation and Auburn City Resolution 5533, which again, we will continue to do until we enter into Phase Three of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington Phase Reopening Plan. So we'll call the meeting to order, and Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right, thank you. Do we have any announcements, reports, and presentations?
No, Chair.
Any agenda modifications?
Under new business, the mayor is going to give a update on a House bill.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move into our agenda items for council discussion this evening. And the first item on the agenda is the city council and hearing examiner joint meeting. And we'll turn this over to Director Tate.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council Mayor. I am actually going to transition this over to the city's planning services manager, Jeff Dixon, who will provide a presentation and introduce our hearing examiner. Jeff, you're on mute.
Thank you. This is Jeff Dixon, Planning Services Manager. I'm here before the plant city council tonight to talk about another of the city's decision-making processes. As you may recall, I previously was before the city council in March and discussed the planning commission operation. But tonight, I would like to talk about the operation of the hearing examiner form of decision-making for the city. So if I can share my screen, I have a few slides I'd like to show. Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay. So I would like to speak about three topics as part of my presentation. I'd like to talk about the legal basis for the operation of the hearing examiner. I'd like to talk about and present the some proposed hearing examiner rules of procedure. And then I'd like to introduce our hearing examiner, Phil Albrecht. And if the force is with us and technology is cooperating, I would like to have him share his screen and talk about recent operations and proceedings of the hearing examiner. So the hearing examiner form of decision-making is authorized by state law and by city law. In terms of the state law, there are two primary laws that provide for the hearing examiner system. The main one is RCW 35A 63170 that authorizes that cities and counties may use the hearing examiner form of decision-making for certain zoning matters. There's also authorizes in 110, the hearing examiner system as a replacement for the board adjustment. And then there are also minor provisions of state law that authorize the hearing examiner to conduct open record hearings on specific types of decisions, those being for subdivisions, for appeals of city decisions, and for abatement and removal of junk vehicles. Essentially, the city hires or contracts with a hearing examiner to conduct quasi-judicial hearings in place of local bodies such as the planning commission, a board of adjustment, or the city council. The advantages of the hearing examiner system is that it provides for a professionally trained individual, typically an attorney, who makes objective quasi-judicial decisions. It provides that these decisions are supported by adequate record and free from political influences. It also allows the local legislative advisory bodies like the city council and planning commission to better concentrate on policy and regulation decision-making. It also has the advantage of potentially reducing local government risk and liability exposure through consistent and legally defensible quasi-judicial decisions. And just as a short refresher, quasi-judicial decisions or actions are those where the decision-maker is sitting as a judge evaluating a specific case or proposal submitted by an individual or a property owner. Some examples include variances, conditional use permits, and subdivisions. In each case, the decision-maker is asked to make a decision that affects a particular piece of property or a particular individual or party. And most of these quasi-judicial actions are the responsibility of the city's hearing examiner. By contrast, in my presentation to the city council in March, I talked about the planning commission's responsibility and that they are mainly legislative. So their decisions are recommendations to the city council that if, in terms of regulations that affect the entire community, not just an individual property owner or a single piece of property. Examples include updating the conference plan and adopting changes to our subdivision or zoning code, where in these cases, the decisions by the planning commission affect the entire community. The state, pardon me, the city authority for the hearing examiner system is provided in Auburn City Code Section 2.46. That is an attachment to your packet this evening, and it provides for the city's establishment of the hearing examiner system. It generally provides for a broad scope of responsibilities of the position. It addresses the types of decisions and the process the city will use for selecting a hearing examiner. It also provides for independence of decision-making and provides some general procedures for the conduct of public hearings and for the process leading to decision-making. Certain decisions are final by the hearing examiner. Other decisions are appealable to the city council or are merely recommendations to the city council who makes the final decision on those cases. Within that code section, it provides for the powers and jurisdiction of the city's hearing examiner. The city council has delegated certain decision-making to the hearing examiner on land use cases, but has also given the hearing examiner authority for making decisions on other types of subjects and that are the subject matter of other city departments. So I have four examples pulled from the code of other types of decisions that the hearing examiner acts upon. These include appeals of dangerous dog determinations, that is generally the responsibility of the legal department. Appeals of the city engineer regarding construction permits, that is responsibility of the public works department to resolve complaints about third-party billing for utilities, that is responsibility of the finance department. And appeals of impact fee determinations by the Parks and Recreation Director. And there are others listed in the city code section. Similar to the city council and to the planning commission, the city proposes to adopt hearing examiner rules of procedure. Having these rules in place has the benefit of providing greater specification for the steps and conduct of public hearings. I heard that the city council was amending theirs tonight. And having the rules of procedure in place is valuable to all participants to have a standard set of guidance to consult in advance of those procedures and know how that determine, how those processes are going to proceed. The city has not previously had hearing examiner rules of procedure, so we're proposing to adopt a new set that we've not had before. The set that was developed and has been included as an attachment in your packet, it have been jointly developed by the hearing examiner and by the city's legal and community development departments. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the hearing examiner system or on the rules of procedure.
Any questions, council, for Jeff? Hey, Jeff, the only question I would have is, we talked about the future adoption of the Resolution 5555. When would you anticipate that to come before council?
I think I indicated in my agenda bill 19th of October, but
Okay.
I don't know if that agenda is available, so I would propose that it come forward at a time when there's available space on the council agenda. It does not necessarily have to be that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Sterns has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have just a background question on the draft rules. Where did they come from? What were they modeled on, or you know where they came from?
Yes. The, we started out with a template for rules and procedures that our hearing examiner has used in many other jurisdictions. So we've taken those and then reviewed those and made some change to suit our local codes. And that's the draft that we've developed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown has raised his hand.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you. I'm curious, was there a triggering event that caused the city to consider adopting the procedures that we previously did not have?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. No, there is not any precipitating event. It's something that we've had as a goal for many years, and it does provide us some greater clarity on procedures to have these in place. So it would be beneficial to us, but there was nothing in particular that triggered it bringing at this time.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, Jeff, thank you very much.
Sorry, Councilmember Trout Manuel has raised your hand.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'm sorry, I did mute myself.
You're muted, yep.
I asked my question and I realized I was mute. My question was, are we hiring another full-time person? Or how many, how much time is this person gonna have to use?
This, this is not, this does not represent an increase in any work. We've been contracting with the same hearing examiner for over 10 years. And so this would just be a continuance. And matter of fact, we, the city council approved Resolution 6451 authorizing the agreement for hearing examiner services back in 2010. And we've been using Phil Albrecht of the firm Albrecht and Associates since that time.
Okay, thank you. That was before I came on, but thank you for explaining it.
Sure.
Other questions, council, for Jeff? Okay, don't hear any Jeff, so thank you very much. Go ahead.
With that, I'd like to introduce Phil Albrecht, who has, who'd like to talk to you a little bit about the operations of the hearing examiner services for the city. And so I will stop screen sharing so that you can see him and he can address the council.
Great, thank, thank you. Welcome, Phil.
All right, thank you, and thank you for having me come and talk to you. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a little briefing on what I've been doing for the city. As Jeff mentioned, I've been working with the city actually since 2007. I started in a separate law firm, Ogden Murphy Wallace, then, and then formed my own firm back in 2010. I currently do hearing examiner services for about 20 jurisdictions, including some of your neighbors like Federal Way, Renton, and Fife. I was the one that held the hearings on the warehouse redevelopment campus, which was a big deal out in Federal Way, and I also did the master plans for Black Diamond. So I've been doing this a long time. I really love my work, and I've really enjoyed working in the Auburn community as well. I mean, Auburn hasn't had any Black Diamond master plans in the last 13 years, thank God, but it's been pretty quiet. I mean, ironically, I think probably the most controversial hearing I had in Auburn was for a duplex, of all things, something like 10 years ago. That, that pretty much packed the room with something like 60, 70 people who didn't want a duplex in their neighborhood. So you just, you never know, you know, what's, what's gonna create some controversy. I mean, I've held projects in Auburn for subdivisions with over 150 homes, and you just get, you know, a handful of people in those. So it's a, you just have to be prepared for anything. In the last few years, I've done annual reports to the council land use committee. I haven't done it in a few years, but I did think that an annual report would be kind of a good way to introduce you to the kind of work that I do and some of the code issues that come up. So I'm going to share screen on my annual report. And hopefully I'll, I have trouble seeing, but I think this is the one. Let's see. Jeff, is that my annual report? Did that pop up? Yeah, looks like it did. Okay, so this is, just to give you an overview of what happened in the last 12 months. And if you're curious, this year has been, in terms of a number of cases, hasn't been any different from other years. We had 10 hearings this year so far in the past 12 months. And I looked up my last annual report, and that was 14, and that report said the year before was 10. So this is, is fairly typical. And like I said, I'm just gonna quickly go through some of the cases that happen over and over again. The first one in the last 12 months was for a home occupation permit. These are, you know, usually nobody shows up to these. They're, they're just for home-based businesses. Your, your code is really well set up to, you know, maximize flexibility so that people can develop their businesses at home while at the same time ensuring that the neighbors don't notice that it's there. And, and I think those criteria are so well done that nobody, you know, has any problems with them, and they're rarely controversial. One year, it was a little controversial because people were alleging it violated the neighborhood covenants. But as a hearing examiner, that's outside my jurisdiction. I don't impose or enforce, you know, local covenants. So that was kind of between the neighbors and them in terms of complying with the code. It was just fine. The next one was for a warehouse project. I've had a few warehouse projects, and then you probably noticed some of them being built in C Street, that kind of place. I mean, these are very large structures, and sometimes they, you know, they can be. And some of the other cities I've worked with, in Dupont, for example, it, you know, brings half the city in because they're, they're just sick and tired of all these warehouses. But in Auburn, it's, they're really well located in your industrial area. in Auburn, it's, they're really well located in your industrial areas, you know, and, and like this particular project here was completely surrounded by industrial use and it was a perfect location for it near one sixty-seven and so forth. So no public controversy and it, it, it passed easily. This kind of brought out a little bit of anomaly in your code, though. A few months later, I had the same project again, the applicant reduced their the size of the warehouse from three hundred and thirty thousand square feet to two hundred and something. Because your code says any change in the area of a building of ten percent or more is considered a major amendment and they have to go through the whole hearing process again. So even though they were, they were reducing the impacts of their project, that, that applicant had to go through the hearing, but it was quick and, and we got it done right away. Now this next one, the Alicia's preliminary plat, I'm, I'm, I'm really excited by this one because, you know, as I mentioned, I've got twenty clients and Auburn was the first one to venture out and try to do virtual land use hearings. I think jurisdictions were a little afraid to do that beforehand, but, but Jeff Dixon managed to, you know, put together some very comprehensive procedural rules to make sure that everything worked well. And I was really surprised. I mean, it worked really well. I've been, I've had a lot of people tell me they I think that virtual hearings are actually more effective than, than in-person ones because people can participate from, you know, the comfort of their home instead of having to drive out to city hall. And I just found it really easy to, to, to have staff answer questions. It was almost like conducting a symphony where some member in the audience would have a question about, you know, how's this affect the road in front of my house? And I can just automatically point to the, your traffic engineer or someone in the public works department and they can answer it. So, I mean, I think we had about somewhere, do you remember Jeff, maybe eighteen people or something in this hearing or probably even more? And it went very smoothly. And because of that, the idea caught on to all my other clients and that's all I, I mean, I spend every day practically holding virtual hearings now. And it all started at least my client base in the city of Auburn. So that, that was really nice. Here's that conditional use permit I told you about. About six months later, they had to come back for something smaller. The, the longest hearing I had in the last twelve months was one where, again, that no, none of the public showed up. The subdivisions are the ones that, that do generate the most public interest. In this particular case, we just had, the applicant was represented by an attorney and, and there were some disagreements about how conditions of approval should be worded or even imposed. And we, it was nice, we actually managed to work out some alternative wording during the hearing that made everybody happy. In this particular case, I'm gonna give you an example of the kind of issues that were faced with the, because of development constraints, the applicant was putting a stormwater facility in a geologically hazardous area. It was a pipe or something. And the staff wanted the applicant to sign a hold harmless agreement that basically said, okay, we'll let you do this, but if there's any liability, you, the developer pay for that liability. And developer didn't want to sign it. I was familiar with some case law that says you can't make developers sign hold harmless agreements for every subdivision, but if there are special circumstances, something unique to the project, you can. And in this particular case, it was unique to the project and required it. The dangerous dog appeals, those are tend to be very long as well, very emotional. I mean, usually what happens, and I see this happen over and over again in the city is, you know, for the most part, people are pretty responsible about their dogs, but every once in a while, you know, their ant will come and visit or something and accidentally leave the front door open, the dog gets out and and kills another small dog or bites somebody or something like that. And all of a sudden, you've got, you know, law-abiding citizens defending their, their family members, their pets in a hearing. And that's a little hard for everybody. And like I said, they, they can go on for two or three hours. What's kind of interesting about this particular case, though, is that the woman who had her dog designated as dangerous, had no problem with the designation. She, she agreed that her dog did it, but she wanted the five hundred dollar yearly registration fee waived. When your dog is declared dangerous, it can be very costly. You have to spend money for a proper enclosure. You gotta pay this yearly five hundred dollar fee. And she just wanted me to waive it, but I just, I didn't have that authority. I only have the authority to determine if the designation was correct or not. Your ordinance says five hundred and, and that can't be changed. So that's how we, we handled that. Finally, I think the, the only other kind of interesting one was a shoreline conditional use permit where I don't know how familiar you all are with shoreline permits, but that's kind of a dual review process between the state and, and the city of Auburn. It's really the only, the hearing process where my decisions are, some of them are preliminary and they have to be finally approved by Department of Ecology and, and I, I guess the, these poor homeowners, they wanted to build a house along the Green River there, but they were in the urban conservancy shoreline designation, which is a very sensitive area. So they had to go through the whole conditional use process, which means I issue a decision first, DOE second. But, but it shows that, that the regulations appropriately, you know, required that additional level of review because their property was next to wetlands, it was next to steep slopes, it was next to the Green River. So, you know, I think it worked out well in the end that, that DOE, you know, had to include its expertise in the review of that project. So this is kind of fairly typical for what I, what I do every year. As I said, that no big projects in the last twelve years. I mean, nothing really huge in, in Auburn so far, knock on wood. I mean, a big project for me, I could have a hearing that goes on for an entire week. In Auburn, in, since two thousand and seven, I've never had a project go for more than a day. So, you know, so far, so good out here and, and, you know, hope that it continues to be that way. So. Any questions from anybody or?
Questions council for Phil? We're not hearing any Phil, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all your work you're doing for the city of Auburn.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks for having me. Have a good night.
Jeff, thank you once again. All right, and council, I don't think anybody can see me. For some reason or other, my videos go on incognito. I don't know why, but the background is there, but I'm not, but I am truly here. And that's why I say, I, you know, the, Phil mentioned having the virtual meetings and I know we're all involved with that and we're, I guess, somewhat getting used to it. But hopefully we'll get used to it for the long term. Hopefully this thing will be shortened up enough where we get back together in person once again. And I know my commute increased tonight from eleven seconds to fourteen seconds. Kind of had to navigate the hallway through the dogs. So longer commute time.
Deputy, you might want your virtual screen down.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that, Mayor.
Oh, turn your video, stop your video and then turn it back on again.
So I'll stop my video.
Yes.
Turn it back on again and I'm still not there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next portion of the meeting, at least. And our next agenda item will be our public works and community development discussion items. And for that portion of the meeting, we'll turn it over to somebody you can actually see, and that's Councilmember Brown.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. The next item on the agenda tonight is public works and can, community development, excuse me, community development discussion items. And so item six A, I would ask Director Tate to please take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening again. And as is the case with the prior presentation, I'm gonna turn this over to Jason Crum, who is the Development Services Manager for the city of Auburn and also serves as the city's building official.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members and mayor. I am here tonight, as Jeff said, to provide a presentation on the building code. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Let me know if you can see that. And can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So I've got a fairly full kind of thirty-minute presentation on building code. And I'll try to leave some time at the end for some questions if there are any. But the presentation is kind of in two parts. The first, I'm gonna provide a little bit of background on the origin of the building codes and the adoption and amendment process. And then I'm going to talk in the second half about the city's role in administering and enforcing those codes. So go ahead and get started. So going back over a hundred years in the coun, in this country, there have been building codes and regulations in effect. So over time, primarily three separate building code region, regional groups were developed. The Building Officials Code Administrators, Boca International Conference of Building Officials, ICBO, and the Southern Building Code Congress, SBCC. And each of those three organizations and regions developed their own separate and distinct building codes. I, I copied this picture, this map, I thought it was interesting from nineteen seventy-seven Department of Commerce report that was tasked with kind of identifying all the different building codes that were in effect and at what level of adoption they were in effect in, in each individual state. So you can see there's kind of five different kinds of shading, a lot of different, you know, sometimes, some states have them optional, sometimes they're, you know, enforced just for government buildings. Sometimes it's, you know, required code throughout the entire state. This map just kind of generally shows those three different regions and of those three organizations that I mentioned. So for Washington, we had the uniform building code adopted where we were in that ICBO group. And that was adopted in nineteen seventy-five. But as you can kind of imagine with the various different codes in effect that in different areas at different levels of the state became difficult for architects, contractors, engineers and legislature, legislators to kind of navigate all of the, 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 the different codes and resulted in some inconsistencies with building construction. So step in the International Code Council, which was formed in nineteen ninety-four. And the purpose that organization was to start developing single model, model code or set of codes and standards to use for design and building the compliance process to construct safe, sustainable, affordable and resilient structures. That, that's kind of their mission statement. And that group ICC incorporated those other three professional groups that showed before as of two thousand and three. So I won't go into too much detail, but here's some, you know, background information on ICC. They estimate that nearly two billion people on the planet are affected by the international codes. They have a lot of highly qualified members that evaluate all kinds of testing methods and materials and code updates and standards. And they provide certifications and accreditations. So this group updates the building code standards every three years. It's, you know, just a cycle and it takes approximately those three years to update and publish those new codes. And the process is open to the public. I think it's pretty interesting. Any, anyone is free to submit a proposed code change to ICC through their website and all of those proposed code changes are evaluated by their committees. And then ultimately, those that move on go to the voting membership to decide whether they are adopted or not. It is a public and private sector collaboration. So I think they estimate that the government voting representatives are about fifteen thousand, whereas the private sector members are fifty-five thousand. So they public is three to four times the amount of the, the government members. For the two thousand and eighteen codes that we'll talk about in, in a little bit, they identified that there were over thirteen hundred code changes proposed and they had over three hundred and sixty thousand votes cast regarding those, those changes. So every three years, they publish a new code manual. I don't know, it's better visual probably in person, but this is the nineteen eighty-five Uniform Building Code. You know, pretty good sized manual. Then this is the one that replaced it. You know, it's over two times in height and in width. You can see it's quite a bit more extensive. So these guys, they never really get smaller. The only way they get smaller is if they, they pull some of the chapters out and like make a new book out of them. So you know, every year, every three years, there are more, you know, more, more and more things to learn and, and to implement. At the state level, we also have a Washington State Building Code Council and, and that organization was created in nineteen seventy-four with the objective to provide independent analysis and advice to the legislature and to the governor's office. And they were tasked with developing and adopting the state building code. So they established the minimum requirements as it relates to building, plumbing, mechanical, fire and energy code requirements. And so they officially adopted the Uniform Building Code in nineteen seventy-five and then they started the, adopting the international codes in two thousand and three. And this is a list of the current building code as it exists today. That mostly the two thousand and fifteen International Code references. And so in kind with the ICC publication, a new every three years, the State Building Code Council goes through an adoption and, and amendment process every three years as well. They have some technical advisory groups that are put together in specific categories like fire and residential building, commercial building. And they start reviewing the, the code updates and proposed codes at the state level. Really shortly after the new codes are published, each cycle, they are responsible for providing a report to the council with recommended changes. And then there's a public hearing. And then finally, a, the code is adopted. So there's a timeline on this slide that just kind of shows for the two thousand and eighteen International Building Code was first published September two thousand and seventeen. The, the tag report was provided to state council in July of two thousand and eighteen. And then a year later, there was a public hearing and adoption of the code. The effective date of the twenty eighteen codes was supposed to be July of two thousand and twenty, but that did not happen. Due to COVID, it was delayed initially to November of two thousand and twenty, which was also further delayed. And it is now anticipated to be in effect February of next year, two thousand and twenty-one. So the new codes, the twenty eighteen codes and the state amendments to those codes have already been, they've gone through the public process, they've already been adopted by the state. The only thing we, you know, don't have yet is the implementation of those codes, which we believe will be February. Fingers crossed. So even though it's a state, you know, the law, the law of the land essentially, and, you know, we don't have the option to not enforce them and developers, contractors don't have the option to not construct to those codes. We do have the option to adopt those codes ourselves through our municipal code. And we do that also every three years. And, and a few good reasons are allows us the opportunity to add our own local amendments that we think are appropriate for our community. We get to allow appeals to those decisions locally instead of having the appeals go to the state level. And we can establish our own enforcement policies and penalties as well as if needed prosecute at the local court level instead of the state. So we, we do that. We have that. Auburn City Code Title Fifteen is our building code. It's entitled Buildings and Construction. And for the last over a year, almost two years now, we have been working with the Valley Regional Fire Authority and our legal department, I should say, on proposed amendments to Title Fifteen. So we are in that process right now. And we, so this is kind of a list, a schedule of the anticipated series of events here. We had a meeting, meeting with Planning Commission last week to talk about the code amendments and significant updates. We will be going forward to Planning Commission next week at a public hearing where we hope that Planning Commission will recommend moving forward to city council. And we have that scheduled for December, a city council study session to go over those, those amendments with council. And then have. The draft ordinance prepared for hopefully a January adoption, so we have it in in place prior to that. February effective date of the code. So that is a shape of the things to come and now I'm going to talk a little bit about. Our role in enforcing and administering those codes. So before I.
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask if any council members have any questions on the prior presentation. I think we're good, Jason, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So just a little bit of background about our team, you know, some of our team, the people that I'm fortunate to get to work with every day. And benefit from their experience and knowledge. Our building team, besides myself, we have four staff members with. Over a hundred years of collective experience and fifteen certifications from International Code Council. For Plans Examiner and Inspection Knowledge for Residential, Commercial. Fire Design and Mechanical. And then our Permit Technician Team of three who have twenty years of collective experience and. Those three are the ones that facilitate all of the applications that come in every day, generally. Between three thousand and four thousand a year. And then. Myself, I prior to coming to the city, I was a professional engineer licensed with the state and did. As a as a civil engineer and did design work. And I am now a certified building official for the city. So to talk about kind of code requirements, I'm just going to walk through some of the steps of the permitting process. So the first step is, you know, do do you need a permit? And so that is a question we answer for, you know, customers and our citizens all the time. The code, the international codes are very specific about what is exempt from permitting requirements. So we've got a pretty clear, pretty clear guidance on that, the list is not that extensive. So when someone comes to us, for example, and asks. Do I need a permit for, you know, a hundred and fifty square foot shed in my backyard? We we know that the the answer is no, a permit's not required. But we do remind people that even though a permit may not be required, it does not authorize. Work that violates codes and standards, so. Construction still has to meet building code requirements and. You know, our requirements with the Department of Ecology as it relates to to stormwater issues. And our own zoning code to make sure, you know, that structure meets setbacks. If a permit is required. You know, then we we move on to the submittal process and what types of documents are required to be submitted. So the the building code as it speaks to design professionals and when they're required. Says that that is up to the local jurisdiction. At the state level, there is an R C W that specifies for non-residential projects that are greater than. Four thousand square feet and in any multifamily building more than four dwelling units. A licensed architect or engineer is required. So along with some of the amendments that I'll talk about hopefully in December. And and kind of some of these guidelines or requirements. We don't really have the flexibility to be less restrictive than what the state has has adopted. We can only be more restrictive, so it's again pretty clear in in this case when. A design professional is going to be required based on the scope of the scope of the work for the project. Once those applications come in. You know, we review those documents, the the plans and the construction documents for a number of things. That, you know, this is a list, I won't go into all the details of of all of these items, but. These, these are just some of the things we look at, occupancy group, I want to get a little bit more into. Because it, I think it's, it's an important element that influences a lot of the design requirements. But just for reference, that's some of the many things we look at. So occupancy group, there are, there's ten categories essentially defined in the building code. So any type of building that is constructed or proposed use is going to fit into one of these ten categories. And within these categories, there are, you know, kind of subcategories, different levels within these categories, but. You know, just just generally. For example, the Assembly Group, that is where, you know, you'd expect to have gathering of people. People congregating, so our own, you know, City Hall Council Chambers would be considered an Assembly Group. B is just kind of a general office and professional services group. Education E is for non-college level. Education facilities, so your elementary, middle, high school. So tho- those kind of broad groups are. Like I say, well defined in the code. And this occupancy group is important because it influences what the design requirements are going to be. Within that building or within those spaces, so just to name a few. The building height, so how tall a building can be, how many stories it can be. Is dependent upon the occupancy as well as kind of how it's constructed, what type of materials used to construct it. How how the area limits, so how big a footprint the building can be or each individual. Level within the building can be, whether or not it requires fire protection, sprinklers, alarms. The occupancy load, so that is the, you've probably heard of that, you know, maximum occupancy within a room or a building. That's determined by the type of use and then means of egress is. That is, you know, how many exits are required. What's the maximum length of the path to get to that exit is allowed within that building? And that's dependent on the occupancy class and the type of use, so all all of those elements are. Influenced by by what that use and occupancy is, so. The image there was just kind of an attempt to compare. Some of the maximum occupancy or sorry, maximum area. Footprints for different occupancy types kind of comparatively, so if you have your B, your business occupancy. That represents kind of the entire building there. If if you have the same type of construction. And then you change that occupancy to an R two, which is a residential, like a multifamily apartment or a hotel. You you could only have that building be about ninety percent of what it could be for for B occupancy. And if you go to an M mercantile or retail, you know, you probably lose about another ten percent of that footprint. And then the assembly gets even smaller and then hazardous use, those are the ones that are kind of need to be the the smallest footprint. You know, that is maybe fifteen percent overall of the the total B occupancy. And so also I want to point out that. You know, that's when a when a new building is constructed, typically we know what the proposed use is going to be and we review all those. Code design elements to make sure that it's going to meet all those requirements. However, in in an existing building, when there's a change of use, we have to do that same thing. So there are limitations in the code about what. Kinds of elements have to be upgraded, you know, depending on how much work is being done, but. When there is a change of use, so if you have an existing building going from a business occupancy to an assembly area. The the floor plan and all those exit requirements and fire protection requirements are something that really need to be. Reevaluated again as though it were, you know, a new building proposal. So once. Project has been approved, we issue permits and just wanted to note here that the state. Requires us, our jurisdiction to verify contractor registration. Prior to issuance of a permit, so we do that for every permit that's issued. We do that through our business license process, so. Contractors are required to get a business license in the city to do work within the city limits. And as part of that business license review and approval process, the contractor's license is being verified at that time. And then the state does have an R C W that speaks to. An owner not being required to get a contractor's license if they're taking the permit out in their own name and doing their own work, so. We do get those types of applications, we just remind homeowners or make sure that they're aware that. If they do hire someone, you know, subcontractor, if you will, to do some of the work that. You know, now it's kind of their responsibility to make sure that whoever they're hiring has a has a license and all that good stuff. Once we've issued a permit, we perform inspections throughout the construction of that project, so the. Here's the list from the building code that specifies, you know, the minimum inspections that we. Are obligated to perform, so you know, footing, foundation, framing, et cetera, for a. Single family home, just to give you an idea, our inspector typically will go out about twelve times during the construction of that home. For, you know, larger project, it's going to be more a multifamily apartment building that could be thirty inspections. For one building and the, I was going to point out the the Copper Gate project, the inland development. On the north side of the town at the the old drive-in Valley Six Drive-In site. That project, even if you haven't seen it, they're going gangbusters, it's like, it's pretty amazing. They started, I believe, last December and we have gone out for three hundred and seventy inspections to that site. Since that time, the. Auburn Town Center Project, the seven story south of City Hall, south of Sunbreak. Which is almost done and looks fabulous, I think, pretty amazing. We have performed one hundred and seventy five inspections, just building plumbing, mechanical inspections alone. So. We, you know, perform those inspections to make sure that the work is being done in accordance with the approved plans and per code requirements. And then, you know, when something is identified, our inspector will work with the contractor to make sure those are corrected. We, you know, we were out there a lot, like I said, we're not out there twenty four seven, so. You know, ultimately, it is the contractor's responsibility to make sure that work is done per the code requirements. But, you know, most of them usually do their best and do a good job. So for our final inspection, when everything's been, you know, inspected and it's good to go, we issue. A certificate of occupancy for commercial projects and that is. Some of some of the elements that are contained in that certificate are also required by code, but. It does include the the type of use, the occupancy load. The the occupancy class that I kind of mentioned before, you know, whether it has sprinklers. Though those are used, so those are issued to the owner and and those should, that certificate should be kept. With the building in perpetuity, so that it can be referenced and so that future owners know. You know, what the maximum occupancy was and what code applied at the time and. You know, this is what we would, we would look at if there was a change of use to determine, you know, whether a new certificate of occupancy. Needs to be issued for that. Wanted to kind of give a shout out to V R F A, so among the emergency response services and. Fire investigation and all the other great things they do in the community, they also have a partnership with us. When it comes to review and inspections of construction work, so they. They do review fire permits, although we, so a fire permit, say for a new sprinkler system is a. Is applied to to us, we we take in that permit, we create the record, we route the review to V R F A. They provide their review, their review comments, their recommendations to us and then we approve and issue the permit. They will perform inspections for us and then. We will find all the permit out and we're responsible ultimately for the permit record. So just kind of a reminder to everyone that there are elements of codes and our standards that. Specify, you know, the fire marshal. And sometimes codes reference the fire code official. So just to clarify, fire, the Fire Marshal Authority and responsibility is with V R F A. The fire code official responsibility is with the city of Auburn. And and with my position as the the building official, so. The the city, you know, ultimately is the authority that adopts the code and is responsible for administering and enforcing it, so. That is, that is our role. And then just wanted to mention, you know, code violations, sometimes those are brought to our attention and. When that happens, one of our code officers, code compliance officers will go out and investigate and and work with owners to. You know, satisfy any issues that are discovered. We receive those violation questions or concerns from. You know, citizens, you know, neighbors who have questions about things going on in their neighborhood, sometimes city staff who are out and about and see things. Police and V R F A, sometimes they forward us potential code violations and we also receive those. From other agencies as well. So that is what I had prepared this evening. So thank you for everyone's time, happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Jason, does anyone on the council have any questions?
Councilmember Sterns has raised a hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Um, yeah, thank, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I I had a question about energy codes, energy conservation, can can you talk about that and how that is handled in our city?
Yeah, so part of the Washington State Building Code includes the Washington State Energy Codes. There's two separate energy codes, one for a commercial, one for residential. And I do actually intend to provide counsel with some, quite a bit of more background information on some of the. Significant changes to the energy code this year, because I think they are probably some of the things that. Are going to be the most challenging for developers with this code adoption, so. Just just as kind of some overview background. The energy code, I believe, was first adopted in two thousand and six and the idea was. That they had a target goal of reaching by two thousand and thirty. A, if you compare a building that's built twenty five years in the future, two thousand and thirty versus two thousand and six. That the two thousand and thirty building would use thirty percent less energy than the two thousand and six building, so. The way it was kind of explained to me on this, from the state level was, you know, we've made a lot of progress up to this point. With all the energy code updates, but a lot of the, a lot of the updates that have occurred so far have kind of been low hanging fruit. And to really get to that target in twenty thirty, we're gonna have to. You know, explore some fairly significant changes to how building construction is done. So I I do want to spend a little bit of time on some of those things in December. To go a little bit more into the, some of the specifics of what those changes are.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Malinga.
Councilmember Malinga.
Yes, thank you. My question is, when you talk about the certificate occupancy, you said that you have to get one if the use of the building changes. But what if someone's doing a ten improvement project within their facility? Let's say they're building additional offices and such, would they have to get another building of occupancy certificate? What is it that you were talking about, you say, change use that would cause you to have to get that occupancy permit updated? Thank you.
Yeah, it. So yes, a certificate occupancy would be required if it was a change in use. So certificate occupancies are issued for a building as a whole, but also for individual tenant spaces as well. So if you have like a, you know, a shell space, like a, you know, mini mall strip mall type thing where you have different uses in the different tenant spaces, each one of those will have its own separate certificate of occupancy. And that occupancy just kind of notes what the use was at the time that it was issued and the time that the the code was reviewed for compliance. So if if you've got, you know, a typical office use that is expanding and adding more cubicles, that's not really a change of use necessarily. It wouldn't require a new certificate of occupancy. It's only when the new use kind of moves into a different category, one of those other types of uses. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I was just trying to understand what were the different types of use that it could be. So when you say there are different categories, what other categories?
So there's an assembly use. So that's where you have a lot of people gathering, like, you know, movie theater or bowling alley or religious services, that's an assembly use. B is just general business offices, could be a professional office, like an attorney's office. Then you have like an M category, which is more retail mercantile. So you have customers kind of coming in, selecting things for purchase, leaving. Then you'd have like a storage type of use. There's industrial. So so if someone's converting, say, a warehouse that is has primarily been storage use, but they're now turning into like a fabrication and assembly kind of shop, that's a change in use from a from a storage and S to a fabrication, an F. So that's considered by the building code to be, you know, completely different use now. And so if if you if you, the idea is a storage use probably is not going to be as have as many people inside that building or as hazardous as potentially like a manufacturing facility, which might have some more hazardous material, might have a lot more people working in there. So the things like the exiting, you know, number of ways out, how many people can be in certain areas. Those are the type of elements that are looked at as kind of that change of use.
That makes sense. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have a question? Seeing no one with raised hands. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation, Jason.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, as we have Agenda Item 6B, which is the Capital Project Status Report. And Director Gao should be here for that.
Good evening. So I'm actually going to hand this over to Ryan Von Drack and Matt Larson, who are going to provide you with an update on our current capital projects and then also talk in detail about our feature capital project. So, Ryan?
Good evening, counsel. For the record, I am Ryan Von Drack, Capital and Construction Engineering Manager, and we also have Matt Larson, Senior Project Engineer. We're pulling up the presentation right now. Okay, it looks like it's good to go. So you can hit the next slide, Matt. So we're here to to report on the status of the capital projects as well as present the feature project for the fall quarter. We currently have 36 active capital projects totaling approximately 63 million in project value. Of those projects, 19 are in various stages of the design phase and 17 are in some form of construction. Next slide. So this graphic is an illustration that shows the total number of projects bid the last four years against the total construction costs for those projects. So in looking at this year with it, the last bar on the right, we have bid a total of 15 projects to date at a value of approximately $20.5 million. Before we move to the next slide, I wanted to briefly mention the status of a couple of projects that are currently in construction. As we start heading into the middle part of October, we're entering that critical time of year where we have to make some tough scheduling decisions for when it comes to paving roadways or delaying that activity until springtime the following year, when the weather is more conducive to it. We have a few projects that are in this category, and I want to briefly mention those ones. For the F Street Southeast Non-Motorized Improvement Project, this is on the Capital Project Status Report, page 72 of your packets, if you want to take a look at that one. The contractor for this project is working to get the rest of the utilities in the ground and is hopeful to have that initial layer of pavement down this year. We call that the base lift. And then final paving will likely be in the spring of next year. And then on pages 74 and 75 of your packets, we have both the Auburn Way North Phase Two and Phase Three projects. Those are combined together into one project. The or one construction contractor. The contractor for these projects is going to attempt to pave Phase Three, which is from Fourth Street Southeast to Eighth Street Northeast, or they'll try to pave a portion of it. But Phase Two, which is from H3, Eighth Street Northeast to 22nd Street Northeast, that paving is likely going to be pushed into the spring. And then lastly, on page 78, we have the 2020 arterial preservation, arterial street preservation project. This project is over on 15th Street Northwest from R Street Northwest to State Route 167. The contractor for this project is currently installing underground utilities and weather permitting hopes to get the base lift of pavement down. But that project also, the final paving is likely to be pushed to the springtime. Next slide. So what are some of the next projects we're going to see advertised for construction bids? On the fall, this is generally the slowdown period for us for advertising projects for construction bids, just simply because it's just not that time of year to to advertise those those projects. But in December, we anticipate advertising three projects which are listed here. CP 1927 Auburn Way North and First Street Northeast Signal Replacement Project. That project is on page 83 of the CPS report. That project will be advertised for bids in December. And then also the DDUK meter replacement project, the it's Phase Two of that project. We've already advertised one, I believe that was last year. And then that project is on page 84 of your CPS report. And then the Lakeland Hillsway Preservation Project. That's from 57th Drive Southeast to Lake Taps Parkway. That's on page 87 of your CPS report. All three of those projects, we anticipate advertising in December. So a couple more months before we we get to those projects. But with that, I will turn it over to Matt, and he's going to present the feature capital project for the fall quarter.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan, for that. And thank you, councilmembers and mayor, for for giving me the opportunity to talk about this very important project. We're excited to get this one going. So so this project is the Auburn Way North First Street Northeast Traffic Signal Replacement Project. Like the title says, it is at the intersection of Auburn Way North and First Street Northeast. So if you're familiar with this area, this is the Wells Fargo Bank of America. There's the the parking lot for the for the lighting store. And then there's an auto part or an auto repair shop on that northeast corner of that intersection. So the scope and purpose of this project is to replace one of the city's oldest traffic signal systems. As you can see in the picture, it's it's beyond its useful life. Some other, you know, benefits for this project that I'll get into a little bit more detail later. But improved pedestrian and vehicular safety, upgrade the curb ramps to meet Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility requirements. And and we'll be doing some traffic calming measures that I will also talk about a little bit later. And in addition to that, the improvements that we'll make to the signal itself will improve the vehicle capacity through the intersection because we will be adding a left-turn-only pockets on First Street in both directions of First Street, which will help with the the amount of vehicles that can get through the intersection at any given time. So the existing condition, as you can see on the the picture on the left there, that's the northeast corner, that's in front of the auto repair shop. That that cabinet that's attached to the traffic signal pole, that is the traffic signal cabinet, and that is not by any stretch of the imagination our standard for where we would place a traffic signal cabinet. And that cabinet itself is 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 loaded with equipment and it doesn't, we can't get anything else in there. And so we want to standardize the cabinets to make them, you know, this this traffic signal, to make it, you know, main maintainable and and be able to operate it as as we do with our other signals throughout the city. As you can see, on the right-hand side, this this is a very, very much a high pedestrian use area. And the sidewalks and curb ramps in this area are not necessarily conducive to that. There's not a lot of room to maneuver. You know, specifically for wheelchair accessibility, but also just in general, the sidewalks are pretty narrow. And and the traffic signals themselves, the poles encroach into the sidewalk, makes it difficult to maneuver. So some of the benefits. So aside from the obvious one of a new easier to maintain and operate signal, we do have some safety improvements. The the main one that is probably the most noticeable will be the curb extensions, also called, we call them curb bulb outs. And what they do is we use the existing roadway to to that that isn't normally used. It's within a not no parking zone area that's, you know, is close to the to the traffic signal. We use that area and and build out the curbs and the curb ramps. What this does, it it, number one, it's an industry standard for traffic calming to slow down vehicles through the intersection. But it also allows us more area within the right-of-way to meet those those important ADA requirements for the the slopes of the curb ramps. It also eliminates the need for costly and very time-consuming right-of-way acquisitions because we're building our improvements into the into the the roadway area. And the it without the right-of-way acquisition, right-of-acquisition, especially in the downtown area, can be very sensitive to the to the businesses and the property owners. And so so this 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 method of construction or this design, it alleviates that that whole right-of-way acquisition step. Another area of safety is safety improvements is with these bulb outs, these curb extensions. It does allow for the pedestrians more area and that area is further away from the traffic. So pedestrians who are further away from traffic, they, you know, obviously is a is a safer configuration. And then in addition to that, the actual crosswalk lengths will be shortened, which is that area of time where there where the pedestrian is actually, you know, exposed to traffic. Another benefit is is the aesthetically pleasing portion of the decorative signal pole. So in the middle picture there, you can see that that the nice black painted downtown standard pole. We also have the red bricks that surround the the curb ramps on the picture on the right and the red detectable warning surfaces. These are all part of the downtown urban center standards, design standards that we have for the downtown area. The last benefit that isn't isn't really highlighted in this this slide is that we've been coordinating this project with a couple of other projects that are that are are currently either in design or construction. The Auburn Way North Payment Preservation Project, that if you've been downtown recently, you probably are driven on Auburn Way North, you've probably driven through this area, lots of sidewalk and curb ramp repairs. We were, we pulled out this intersection, at least the curb ramp portion of it in preparation for this project, knowing that we're coming back here in the next year to to improve this intersection. We will be paving through the intersection as part of that current project. And so we've been coordinating the design of this project with the construction of that project and making sure that we're trying to limit the the amount of, you know, new pavement that we have to, you know, repair, replace because of this upcoming project. There there will inevitably be some overlap, but we're doing our best to minimize that with with this new design. The other project that we're coordinating with is King County Metro's Rapid Ride project, where they will be improving their 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 bus system through through here. And so we've been coordinating with King County Metro to make sure that we understand where their future stops needs are for that project. So project budget, right now, estimated project cost is at 1.34 million, which is funded through all of city funds, the arterial street fund, which was, this project was designated as part of the traffic signal replacement program and programmed into the budget, the arterial street preservation fund, and then the storm utility fund. So project schedule, as Ryan mentioned earlier, that the design of this project is supposed to be in December of this year, and advertise an award early in '21. And then construction will be the majority of of 2021. And that construction, the completion of that construction date is is so difficult to 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 know for sure, only because with these traffic signal poles and some of the materials that we that we have to purchase in order, or the contractor has to purchase in order to do these improvements, they do have a long lead time. And so and and right now, it's very volatile with with the current situation. And we're right now, we're looking at, we've been quoted at four to five months just for procuring the traffic signal poles themselves. And that timeline seems like it's been changing fairly regularly. And so we're we don't really have a great grasp of what that what that timeframe frame is. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because there will be a period of time where in the construction that it looks like no work is being done. And we just want to make sure that that you understand that that it's most likely because we get to a point and then we can't go any further until we have the new traffic signal equipment and the poles in hand before we can move forward. So just a little point of clarification there. With that, I'm, Ryan and I are are open for any questions or
Councilmember Trump Manuel has raised her hand.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Brown. On that page 69, where you put the new light at, where did the box go? That's either to Matt or or Ryan.
Can you clarify?
The Auburn is Auburn Way at First, Auburn Way North and First Street. You said there that box is the old type of box and you're going to replace that pole. Where did that box go?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. So right now, the plan is to is to move it to the Yes, I hear what you're saying. So right now the plan is to is to move it to the well, basically build a new a new signal cabinet on the northwest corner, which should be in front of the Wells Fargo Building in one of the bulb outs that we plan on on constructing. So there'll be plenty of room there to build to have that that area. That sidewalk's a lot wider over there, too.
Yeah, and because I could look at the the new one, it still doesn't look like there's that much room. And I was just wondering where we're going to place that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just to add to that, too, as part of the coordination effort, we are as part of the Auburn Way North preservation project that's going on right now, they are installing the underground conduit in order to power that cabinet. They're putting it across Auburn Way North and so just in preparation for this project.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
So do we have any more questions? Seeing no other questions, I guess I would ask either Ryan or Matt, do you know where we are procuring those signal posts from? Is it in the state or is it in the in what in the United States or?
It it they are typically American made, although it's not a requirement for a city project. But but typically we we do procure the contractor. Usually it's cheaper to to buy it from within the the US just because of shipping costs. And right now, the the there's really one, well, there's two major manufacturers of those poles. One, they don't, they don't do small orders. And so really, there's only one company right now that has been supplying project or polls for, you know, a for order. And so and those are in the East Coast. I don't know exactly where they are, but they are in the East Coast. And so they're they're very much affected by, you know, storms. We hear it a lot where where, you know, East Coast gets hit by a major storm and then it's another, you know, a couple of week delay for for materials. So, yeah.
Councilmember Sterns is raised your hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Oh, thanks, Councilmember Brown. Hey, I just had a quick question about the 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 box you said. To that that Councilmember Trout Manuel referenced, you said there's going to be a bulb out right there on First Avenue and Auburn Way North. Is that right?
Yes.
And and is that so is that going to cut the width of Auburn Way North or is that just on the First Avenue?
No, good question. Yes, the so so the the southbound right lane of Auburn Way North will not be impacted. The bulb out will only be for that corner will only go basically where the the width of the on-street parking would be. But you couldn't park there on First Street anyway because you're too close to the traffic signal. So it takes up that area of no parking and and allows for a wider a wider sidewalk. We can put the 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 equipment, the signal equipment there and be able to construct an ADA compliant program.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep.
Are there any more questions? Well, thank you, Ryan and Matt. We appreciate the presentation.
Yes, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda, item number six C is a ordinance number 6792. And Director Galb, I think you're up again.
Yes, and again, I'm actually going to turn it over to staff. So they're going to talk to you about some code changes we want to make to the transportation impact fee as well as the proposed change to the 2021 transportation impact fee. And so tonight we have Cecile Malik, who is our senior transportation planner, and James Webb, who is our senior traffic engineer to talk to you about those.
Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, my name is Cecile Malik. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner. And presenting with me is James Webb, Senior Traffic Engineer. So I will start, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for tonight. So I will start walking you through the changes that are proposed to the traffic impact fee code. And then there will be a time for questions. And then James will talk to you about the proposed update to the traffic impact fees for 2021. So in your council packet on page 93, you will find the ordinance for the proposed update or amendment to chapter 19.04 Traffic Impact Fees. And the proposed changes or amendments to the chapter start on page 95 of your packet. So to give you a quick background, the development project, any development project that generate additional trips are charged a per-trip fee to address their impact to the transportation system. And the funds that are collected from the traffic impact fees are used for the transportation projects which add capacity to the street systems. So in reviewing the traffic impact fee code, staff found several areas that needed to be updated. So we have updated, we have identified needed updates to the definitions to ensure that undeveloped lots that will become parking lots, which will not trigger a boarding permit will still trigger the need for traffic impact fees to ensure that they will pay their fair share of traffic impact fees, which would not have been the case, that is not currently the case. We're also updating, propose, sorry, we're also proposing to update the definition so that they are consistent with the Institute of Transportation Engineer Trip Generation Manual. And also to clarify some of the language. We're also clarifying our expectations for the assessment and payment of traffic impact fees. And we've updated language related to the deferral of payments to align with state regulations. We are proposing to revise the language and expectations for independent fee calculations. And we're also updating the exemption section to clarify the language and to remove the reference to outdated programs which expire between 2007 and 2017. And then throughout the code chapter, the language was updated to be more clear and consistent with state requirements. So that's a broad overview of the changes. And I am open to questions.
Does anyone have questions? I think you're off scot-free here this this evening, Cecile.
Great. So I will pass it on to James to talk about the actual fees.
Thanks, Cecile. So every year after we update the Transportation Improvement Program, we change the funding needs that we rely on from traffic impact fees. So we go through the process later in the year to update the fees based on the new newly adopted tip. And we'll start collecting these fees after the first of the year as part of the 2021 overall fee schedule update. So for 2021, the fee per trip will increase by about 5% compared to the current fee that's in effect during 2020. The resultant fee per trip will be $4,894. And that fee is based on the amount of traffic impact fee funding that we have programmed in the recently adopted tip, which covers the the period from 2021 to 2026. And the number of growth trips that are anticipated to occur during that period. So the last time we updated the fee schedule was January 1, 2020, and that was based on the previous 2020 through 2025 tip. That tip included about $24 million worth of traffic impact fee funding for those capacity projects. The new 2021 through 2026 tip, the funding need was reduced to about $19.5 million. So a reduction of about four and a half million compared to the previous year. However, that smaller dollar amount was then spread over a smaller number of forecast trips. The reason for that reduction in the number of trips was to account for an anticipated slowdown in development activity in the city as a result of the current pandemic. We're anticipating that there will be a reduction in development associated with that. So we need to generate less revenue. But that need is split, spread over a smaller number of trips, which results in that 5% increase in the fee per trip. In your packet, you'll see there are two maps. One is for the downtown urban center. And one is for the Lakeland Hills PUD. Within that downtown center, we have reduced the fees that development activity pays to account for proximity to transit service. Better, more frequent transit service than other parts of the city. And a more complete non-motorized infrastructure in and around downtown. So more ability for those trips to occur by pedestrian or bicycle modes instead of vehicle trips. And then in the Lakeland Hills PUD, there's an entirely separate fee schedule that was developed back in 1998. That reflects the fact that the majority of the infrastructure was built out as part of the PUD. But there were still some limited needs that would need to be funded with traffic impact fees. Those fees are based on the Consumer Price Index. And the most recent Consumer Price Index for the Seattle metropolitan area shows that over the past 12-month period, prices have increased by about 2%. So any development in that area pays a reduced fee to begin with. And then that fee is growing at a slower rate based on that Consumer Price Index rather than being based on the needs that are identified in the tip. The other attachment in your packet shows a comparison of the City of Auburn fee compared to the fees that are charged by a whole bunch of other agencies located in Western Washington. You'll see that our proposed fee again is shown where it would slot into this chart. The important thing to note here is that the fees shown for the other agencies in the chart are currently out of date. So you'll see in the chart itself, the Auburn fee is shown as $4,295. That was from two years ago. An updated chart wasn't available at the time that this presentation was prepared. But it's reasonable to assume that as our fees increase, everybody else's fees increase more than likely by a consistent percentage. So while it might appear that we have moved up the list by a number of spots, in reality, we're probably somewhere still in that same slot where everybody's fees have increased. So consistent with Sumner, Buckley, Bonny Lake, Maple Valley, Kent. So we're maintaining our parity with those agencies that are located around us in South King County. And with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey raised his hand.
Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. So James, what you what you just mentioned on the out-of-date comparison. So we have actually have done a 5% increase each of the year over those past two years.
No, la- last year wasn't, I believe, looking at the memo from last year, that the increase last year was about 10%. And then the increase this year is is right at 5%.
Okay, so we were kind of steady and then we did a 10% jump, no, 5%. What is your best guess of how long we would maintain the new current rate?
The the new rate will only be in effect for 2021. And then we will revise the fee again at this time next year to be based on the tip that gets adopted next summer for 2022 through 2027. So this is something that we revisit every year. For the majority of years, the fee continues to increase. But the increase varies depending on what we program in the tip.
Sure, okay. And when could we expect to see this extended chart that's out of date? When would they publish another chart to give us a more accurate representation of the other cities?
So this is a chart that is put together by a member of the City of Bellingham Public Works staff. It's probably a little bit too early for him to be able to get the information to put that together. Because everybody's kind of working on their fees right now and won't have published them until closer to the end of the year. If that's something that you're interested in seeing, I will follow up with him and make sure that we get a copy of that and we'll share it with you when it becomes available.
That would be great. I think it's it's I think it's important for us just to kind of see, not not in comparison where we stand with other cities, but to see what other cities are doing comparatively in their increases in their fees.
Sure.
Kind of give us kind of give us a guide, if you will, to look at.
I I will caveat that with the assumption that he still works for Bellingham. And this is something that he still has the time and ability to put together.
Exactly.
Right.
Great. Thank you, James.
Thanks, Claude.
Do we have any more questions? Well, thank you, James, and thank you, Cecile. I guess that concludes your report tonight. So next up, we have a item number six D, which is the ordinance number 6795 and ordinance amending chapter 12.60 of the Auburn City Code relating to right-of-way permits.
All right. And so for this item and actually the next item on the agenda, Jacob Sweeting, the city engineer, is actually going to do that presentation. So Jacob, you want to start?
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, City Council Mayor. Tonight I will be presenting draft ordinance 6795. That would update the right-of-way use permit section of city code. So use of the public right-of-way is addressed in chapter 12.60 of the city code. The chapter establishes the rules and regulations for controlling and enforcing the use of the city right-of-way to assure that proposed uses are consistent with public health and safety. The chapter also establishes a system of permits called right-of-way use permits. Changes are currently being proposed to the city fee schedule, like the one we just talked about, and permit structure with the intention of promoting economic prosperity while also supporting city cost recovery goals and compliance. It follows that revisions are needed to the chapter 12.60 of the code to support the proposed fee schedule and permit structure changes. Additional revisions are also needed to to modernize the code and also to make the code reflect what our actual current permitting process are. So the current code establishes four types of right-of-way use permits. On the left are type A or banner permits, which allow for hanging banners in the right-of-way. The banners are typically for city or community events and are installed and removed by city MNO staff.
Hey, Jacob.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't, I think you're supposed to be sharing your screen screen right now, correct?
Oh, my apologies. Yes.
That will help them.
I thought it had.
Thank you, Director Galb. Thank you, Director Gob.
Okay, how's that?
Still not sharing yet.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Well, my apologies for that. Um, I was just speaking with Inger before the meeting and we were testing out all the different elements of Zoom. And I guess no matter how much you test it and try it, uh, you just got to work your way through it anyways. So moving on, um, so now you can see on the slide, uh, moving uh, from left to right, type A uh, permits are for hanging banners in the right-of-way. These are typically for city or community events and are installed and removed by city maintenance and operations staff. Type Bs are short-term permits that allow for use of the right-of-way for less than thirty days. Typically, these permits are for things like community events or for even putting storage pods like you see in the picture in the right-of-way or maybe even dumpsters. Type C permits are long-term uses in the right-of-way of thirty days or more. These permits range from sidewalk and alley restaurant seating, balconies that extend over the right-of-way, monitor, monitoring wells and private utility systems that don't have a city franchise agreement. And finally, type D permits are for over high, oversized loads to haul on city streets. So another, a couple of the things noted on the code, the current code also requires payment in full of the permit fee with the permit application and also assesses an additional fee for any permit that closes any portion of a street parking or sidewalk. So some of the changes that are being proposed uh, with ordinance six, seven, nine, five mostly would keep the current right-of-way use permit structure in place. Uh, one of the more significant changes includes adding a distinction between two different types of long-term seat, long-term type C permits. Uh, on the left, we would, we see a surface encroachment type of uh, long-term permit. This is actually a sidewalk seating out on Main Street at Railhop and Brewery. And on the right, we would see another type of uh, long-term type C permit. And that would be a non-surface encroachment. And these would be the awnings that hang out over the right-of-way. So the um, new structure proposes to distinguish between these two very different types of long-term right-of-way use. One that encroaches and actually um, uh, encroaches upon the public's use of the right-of-way and the other uh, which is simply in the right-of-way but doesn't really take away from the public's use. Other proposed code changes uh, include requiring an application fee to be paid with the permit application and then requiring the permit fee as applicable to be paid with the permit issuance. I'll show you on the next slide that we're also proposing that some types of permits would have an application fee that would include the permit fee that, so that no additional payment would be required beyond the original application fee. Another slight change in the code would change the approach towards uh, the, the, the way that we charge for street sidewalk and parking closures. So the fee is only needed if uh, the closure is to the extent that a separate plan has to be reviewed by the city to help pay for our city's review time. And then getting right down to the nuts and bolts of what this would look like in the fee schedule. Uh, this chart shows uh, the, the current and proposed fees for the different types of right-of-way use permits. Starting from the top, type A and B permits generally have minor processing and review time and are proposed to have an application fee of sixty dollars, which also includes the permit fee itself. Moving down the list, type C permits are currently at two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the first year and then a hundred and ten dollars for each additional year for up to five years. The proposed fee schedule would set an application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars and then charge either sixty dollars per year for those non-surface encroachments or a hundred and twenty dollars per year for the surface encroachments for up to five years. Now, the code revisions also include an opportunity for type C permits to be renewed prior to their expiration, in which case the two hundred and fifty dollar application fee would be waived. And that two hundred and fifty dollars really covers the staff time that it takes to review the long-term permits, which is much more extensive than the short-term permits because more people are involved in looking at uh, the different impacts of the long-term use. And then like, excuse me, the next down on the chart are type D permits that show a slight increase of six percent to cover an increase in city review costs. And finally, at the bottom of the chart, it shows the current fee for street parking and sidewalk closures, which is sixty-six dollars. But the new fee would be a hundred and six dollars, which covers about an hour of staff review time uh, for closure plans, but would only apply to significant closures that require a separate plan to be reviewed. So really, the next steps are to bring ordinance six, seven, nine, five to council for adoption. That would be next week. Uh, there will be some additional uh, discussions about cost recovery on October twenty sixth. And then the fee schedule will be brought to council for adoption on November second.
Are there any questions, council members?
Councilor Trout Manuel, raise your hand.
Councilmember Trout Manuel. You are on mute, council member.
Jacob, on page uh, one twenty-nine, you said that uh, is it A, B, and C that are five years? They can take out a permit for five years or do they have?
No, so, so, so type As and Bs are good for uh, less than thirty days. Anything more than thirty days becomes a type C permit. And currently in the code, all right-of-way use permits, specifically the type Cs, are restricted to be not more than five years. Uh, with the opportunity to renew that type C uh, for additional time through the, through the process.
So would they have to go through the whole process again or just go in and pay that uh, hundred and twenty dollar fee?
But so actually, the intent would be to encourage renewals of those long-term permits by offering them a two hundred and fifty dollar waiver, so waiving the application fee if they come in and do it before it expires. So they still have to prepare an application. They just won't have to make the two hundred and fifty dollar payment if they come in and do that before their permit expires.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if I can add on to what Jacob was saying, so the, the review process for a type C, we actually have work that we do every year in order to ensure that we continue to have appropriate insurance for the encroachment in the right-of-way to protect the city's liability in that situation. So they are a little bit more um, staff-intensive work for those type C type permits.
How many businesses do we have that are using those uh, outdoor seedings right now?
Currently, there are two that I know of that have active right-of-way use permits.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sterns, just raise your hand.
Councilmember Sterns, you have a question?
I do indeed. Um, I have a question about the picture of, for type C long-term. So on the left, um, I, I guess, so the, the surface encouragement, um, that the fee is good for the entire um, length of the property?
Okay.
I mean, it looks like there are two separate seating areas.
Right. So um, so each right-of-way use permit, the application itself requires a defined area and time that the right-of-way is going to be used for. In this case, the right-of-way being used is the area inside the wrought iron fence there, the railing. And the separation between the two is actually the entryway into the establishment.
Right.
So the, the right-of-way use area is continuous along the frontage, but does not span across the entire sidewalk. It leaves adequate room for pedestrians to walk next to the area being used.
Right. Um, but that's just one right-of-way, right? It's not two.
That is one right-of-way use permit.
And above it, that's, is that a right-of-way or what is that?
Uh, the awnings above that?
Yeah.
That, that would be considered another right-of-way use.
And did they pay separately for those or were those all included?
I don't have the answer to that. I, I apologize. I could look into that if you'd like.
I'm just, I mean, but under our new system, they would pay separately for those or would that be all included?
Well, I, that's a great question. I don't know if we've necessarily contemplated that. If, if we already included a fee for one of them, uh, I don't know if we would include a, a separate, another fee. You know, we're not, we're not trying to tack on fee after fee after fee. We're just really trying to get compliance and trying to make sure that people are maintaining these permits. Unfortunately, we do have uh, many of the older awnings uh, throughout the downtown area that were in place prior to the permit system uh, really uh, being in place or being of a focus. And so part of this is catching up and trying to, try to uh, get those permitted uh, as we can.
Okay, so to be determined.
Right.
Well, I would add probably in that situation, if somebody was actually doing the awnings and the seating area at the same time, that would all be under one permit. The difficulty you have with the particular picture there is those awnings were there, I think, prior to the seating. Um, and so the seating was done as a separate permit because they already had a permit for the awnings if a permit was in place. Does that make sense? So the awnings have been there for a while.
Uh, to me, it makes sense for like grandfathering. Um, but it sounds like in the future, if you're going to do surface and non-surface, I, I don't see any way around having two separate permits.
Yeah. And, and grandfathering sounds great except for the liability piece for the city. So for these um, awnings and other things that have gone into the right-of-way without right-of-way use permits in the past, we don't have the appropriate insurance to protect the city if something were to happen. So if that awning were to fall or if the balconies off of track were to fall and we didn't have that right-of-way use permit, we don't have, again, that insurance and that hold harmless from the applicant to protect the city. So that's part of why we want to try to encourage um, folks to get into compliance on these. It's not something that we go out and we actively search for these and, and find these. But if somebody wants to make a change to their awnings, that's typically when we start going through that process to bring them into compliance.
Got it.
Good.
Councilor Trout Manuel, raise your hand.
Yes, uh, councilmember Trout Manuel. You're on mute, uh, councilmember.
Oh, God, I keep forgetting that darn thing. Okay, I was wondering, you mentioned about the awning that sticks out. It's uh, and they have a permit for it. How often do they check those that they're uh, stable and they're not gonna, you know, they're not going to be falling down on anybody? Does the city do that or do the, the owners have to keep that up?
Well, it, the permit does require the owner to maintain the structural integrity of the awnings. And so part of our process of uh, renewing the permit is making sure they provide the adequate documentation uh, to show that they at least have considered it. And we also, you know, we, we keep our eyes open. If we see something that doesn't look right, we're going to certainly follow up and ask them to, to show us that it is structurally sound.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions on ordinance sixty-seven ninety-five? Seeing none, I guess we can proceed to item six E, which is resolution fifty-five fifty-four. I guess you're still on, Jacob.
I'm still on. And this time I'm, I'm not going to share my screen or at least I'm not going to try to. Just going to go right into it. So uh, it's actually a fitting night that we have this on the agenda uh, because this uh, resolution provides for uh, the authorization of a memorandum of, of understanding with the Mukshu Indian Tribe uh, that farm, that's going to form a really strong partnership. So uh, in April two thousand nineteen, the City of Auburn and the Mukshu Indian Tribe met to discuss a variety of issues impacting the community. One of the issues discussed was the need for improvements to accommodate non-motorized travel on and along SR one sixty-four. At the meeting, the city and MIT discussed the formation of a partnership to pursue these projects. So since that meeting, city and MIT staff have been meeting on a regular basis to discuss current and upcoming needs, projects, and potential ways to get them done. So this MOU authorized by resolution five, 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 four is a product of these discussions and will set the foundation for the city and MIT to pursue projects together. Some example projects are included in your agenda packet. The MOU includes a template project agreement that will be used to establish funding and partnership terms for these projects. So consideration of the resolution is for adoption uh, scheduled for next week.
Thank you, Jacob. Does anyone have questions or comments they'd like to add? Seeing none, I guess we'll conclude this part of the agenda and I'll turn it back over to Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Thank you, Councilor Brown. So um, we move on our agenda items. Are there any other discussion items this evening? All right, we will move to new business. We do have an item under new business this evening. And this will be a legislative bill update and status presented by Mayor Backus.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Decourcy. Council, I did email you during uh, right around the beginning of this meeting, two documents. One is House Bill fifteen ninety as signed into law and also a document from King County Executive called Health Through Housing Proposal Summary, which is a summary of what King County is proposing to do with the proceeds uh, of a one-tenth of one percent sales tax that the county council will be voting on tomorrow. That would generate in total between sixty, roughly sixty-five to seventy million dollars per year and allow up to four hundred million dollars in bonding capacity. Now, House Bill fifteen ninety was passed for affordable housing uh, with a focus on zero to sixty percent of AMI. The King County proposal from Executive Constantine is focusing on zero to thirty percent AMI. Uh, the goal of the council and the executive, the uh, the ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three one one is sponsored by Councilmember Joe McDermott. And uh, their goal is to provide rapid housing. And they want to do that uh, in one way by purchasing hotels with uh, existing hotels within cities where there are hotels that could be available. Uh, there is a glitch in the language in the House Bill that basically says for construction or construction of new units within an existing structure. And so the attorneys are telling King County that they need to go back to the legislature to receive clarification on whether they can purchase exists, existing structures. Now, the King County Council had up until September thirtieth to pass their ordinance. They did not. So as their sole opportunity expired, that opened up an opportunity for cities to be able to pass their own legislation uh, on fifteen ninety and they could take up to one-tenth of one percent of sales tax. Uh, there was quite a bit of controversy. There were uh, several discussions going on. There are some cities who did indeed decide to pass their own ordinance. Those cities include Renton, Kent. I believe Covington did. Isiqua did. I believe Kenmore did. Tuculpa discussed it and it failed five to two. Um, the goal, or again, with, with a lot of controversy in some of the cities, I asked if we could, as SCA members, meet with Executive Constantine and also Ki- uh, King County Council Chair Claudia Valducci and bill sponsor Joe McDermott to have a discussion on what this looks like going forward. Uh, again, it's, it's very controversial. There are some cities, some of them who have already passed their own legislation that are very leery and untrusting of what that would look like in their own city. Uh, I will reference the hotels that were either purchased or have been leased through King County during COVID to cite homeless individuals who may have been exposed or who are testing positive for COVID. Uh, that is in Kent and in Renton. I will tell you that both of those cities have had significant concerns. They were either not they were not consulted prior to the hotels being utilized for those purposes or there have been significant increases in um, in crime activity surrounding those hotels. So you can understand why there may be some concern by cities and wanting to enact the legislation on their own. My goal with the meeting with some of the cities and uh, the executive and council members was to see if we could come to some type of an understanding, hopefully, on how do we move forward? If indeed the sales tax is going to be enacted. If indeed the sales tax is going to be enacted, and the King County Council will vote tomorrow, and it looks almost absolutely that it will be passed by the council tomorrow for that 1/10th of 1%, which would go into effect on January 1. There are some cities, I will tell you that I questioned as well, that it does not feel right to institute a sales tax increase at a time like this. But those cities who enacted it on their own were of the, of the belief that if the county's going to do it, it's going to happen anyway. We may as well make sure that we are the masters of our own destiny, if you will. So what the proposal from King County has is to have 2,000 single rooms available for permanent supportive housing. And as I mentioned, there is some concern in the language over construction versus purchasing existing, so that will go back to the legislature for, for clarification. What I asked for in the meeting was, and some of the cities were agreeable, that even if they're enacting that tax themselves, they might be willing to work with the county and perhaps through an ILA, hand that funding back over to the county as long as they had some say in how that, how that funding is utilized. Now, in the, in the bill, it says that 60% of the funds collected must be used for construction of either housing or mental and behavioral health facilities, at least 60%. And then the other, up to 40% must be used for operational purposes of those facilities or the upkeep on the construction. Also, in the bill, it says that the county must consult with the city. There is very little understanding of what consult means, and whether it just means, hey, we're building in your city, or they truly are partnering to ensure that whatever is cited within a city has the approval or the blessing of the count, of the council and city officials. In any city, over 60,000 in population, at least 30% of the money that is collected in that city must be spent in that city. So Auburn is one of those cities over 60,000 in population. And let me tell you what the projected sales tax, estimated funds collected would be. And that, this is based on, I believe, 2019 sales, yes, based on 2019 taxable sales. The City of Auburn would have $2.1 million collected. So 30% of that, or yes, 30% of that, so at least $700,000 would need to be spent in Auburn. So, and overall, in the skip cities, so our South King Housing and Homeless Partners, which is where I was proposing that perhaps skip and arch could have ILAs with the county and have more oversight on where a facility may be located, or the types of facilities within each one of those cities, member cities of either arch or skip. Arch on the east side and skip in South King County. The King County Executive and the two councilmembers on the phone call were not opposed to that. We were sharing that the needs in Seattle are very different than the needs outside of Seattle. And so we are hoping for ongoing conversation, but I just wanted to give you an update on some cities around us passing that, why we did not bring it forward. First of all, it was very quick. The council, King County Council had it for the first time last Tuesday. On the 6th, it went, it was moved out of committee and will be voted on tomorrow afternoon. My goal is to work with the county to ensure that either this funding goes through skip or skip has more of a say in it, and that they work more closely with the cities, and trying to build that trust back up and have a relationship to where this is a true partnership on what the needs are within our community. Six of the skip cities received grant funding last year to work on a needs assessment of what type of housing is available in each one of our cities, and I will forward you that assessment as well. It's very surprising. And again, the, the state requires 0 to 60% AMI be the focus. The county proposal is 0 to 30%. Some of the, some of the people I've talked to said, let's be honest, it's really 0 to 0. So it would be housing the chronically homeless. And so we need to ensure that the very best is done for our city. So that's why I wanted to bring this to you tonight, so you have a better understanding if you're hearing it from any of your counterparts in other cities, and how we will be working on this going forward. There any questions, Deputy Mayor? Sorry, you can call on yourself and then the other councilmembers.
I can, huh? How about that? Okay, thank you for that, Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know that Councilmember Tosta from Burien, who is the chair of our Affordable Housing Committee SCA Caucus, called a meeting today, she actually called an emergency meeting. And there were two topics on the agenda today. One was the proposed plan of the Affordable Housing Committee that we still have concerns about. And secondly was a discussion on 1590. And Mayor Robinson from Bellevue is a member of that. She mentioned today that Bellevue was taking this up tonight for a vote, so I'm not quite sure which way it went with Bellevue. Durian has not discussed it yet. We did have the other members, the other cities who passed it, and Marley Lamer from the Tuculpa who mentioned that it was voted down, as, as Mayor Backus said. So there is some, I guess I use the word division amongst the cities on how they're approaching this. I think the mayor hit the nail on the head really well, where we have all mentioned, even in our Affordable Housing Committee, related to the proposed revenue generators, which are all tax generators, that this really isn't the time to do this. But we also know the significant issues we're facing with folks that are under 60% of median income, especially those that are at or below 30%. So we know, as Mayor said, the King County's going to take this up tomorrow, and we let it fall where it's going to fall. And I think us as a council need to review this individually, look at the, the Health Through Housing Proposal Summary that the mayor emailed us, which is Executive Constantine's proposal through the city, through the county council. And, and then we need to make sure that we are supportive of the mayor, her efforts of going forward, and either having the ILAs or whatever we need to do with the county to make sure that we are getting what we need to get in Auburn. As the mayor mentioned, you know, we're looking at about $700,000. And, you know, and bringing skip into it, I think is important. Actually, Angel was, was on the call, the Zoom meeting this morning with us as well, this afternoon, yeah, this morning as well, and as well as other staff members. And I actually asked Councilmember Tosta to let us hear from staff members on this and from Angel on this. So we know where the staff is on it, we know what we're looking at. And again, I just say, we need to be supportive of our mayor as she goes forward with this, and anything we can do in support of her and with her is going to be very important in this period of time. It's not going to be something even at a 10.1% that people are going to embrace widely, I think. But as the mayor said, it's pretty much a feat to complete, I think. And tomorrow's the day they'll be passing this, and January 1, we'll have a new sales tax. And, you know, hopefully, we will see some positive results with this, but time will tell. So that's just my input.
Thank you. Just one more thing, I, I added up the amounts that would be collected from the skip member cities, and it's $1 million annually.
You cut all of it. Can you say that again? What was it?
$14 million annually.
Well.
Through the skip cities.
And that could be leveraged?
Could be bonded against, yes.
Nice, very good. Okay, great. Thank you very much, so.
Councilmember Sterns, raise your hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Yeah, um, thank you. Just a couple points. One, one is that, yeah, I absolutely agree that we should, you know, do what we can to, to help people who are homeless. And I mean, you know, they're, they're here, so it's a question of, you know, where are they going? What can, and what can we do to help them get to where they need to be? I mean, you know, that's, it's, my, my sense is that, you know, given the economy and given the drivers that create homelessness, the problem's not going to go away. So, you know, having good solutions that, that work really, you know, really is important because, you know, for everyone who, you know, every person or every family that gets into permanent supportive of housing, and then eventually just permanent housing is probably one less person that, you know, goes into our shelters and, or doesn't go into our shelters. So that, that is really important. I guess I was just looking for a sense of time, and maybe process-wise, is this something we're going to be voting on in the near future?
Voting on, in what regard, councilmember?
Oh, um, don't, isn't the, the way 1590 works is that the city has to vote whether or not they, they?
So, so we only have up until the time that the county takes their vote, and that's why some cities voted on it last week to be out in front of it. Once the county council takes their vote tomorrow, it over, no city longer has the opportunity to vote on 1590 to be collected within their own city. It becomes county-collected.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
You know, Councilmember Sterns, you mentioned that, you know, homelessness is not going to go away, and we know that. I remember quite a while ago now, but when I was at the Housing Authority, I passed on to my staff a report on homelessness that was very well-written, and it kind of talked about the potential solutions to combat homelessness, some of the issues that caused it, and the people that were affected by it. That report was written, I believe, in 1919. So over 100 years later, here we are, and the problem is still with us. And we do the best we can, and we'll continue to do the best we can to serve those who are in the greatest of need. Any other comments or questions, council for the mayor?
If you have any questions, please don't hesitate. Issues that come up like this, always feel free to give me a call if you have questions or send me an email or schedule some time to discuss it. Sometimes the directors are not as directly involved in some of these issues as I might be, so always feel free to contact me to ask about them if I have not contacted you.
Good, great, thank you. All right, mayor and council, if we have no other items tonight?
Councilmember J Raj.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember J Raj, raise your hand.
Thank you, hon. My, one question is, is, Mayor, are we going to talk to, are you going to talk to the SCA Board about this tomorrow, or is it Wednesday?
I'm not sure if it's on the pick agenda. I honestly have not looked at the pick agenda yet. I'm sure there will probably be some discussion. It has been a hot topic with SCA for the last couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, that was all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe Alexis mentioned today, I believe, Mayor, that it was going to be on pick. So I believe they will have an item on there. All right, council, thank you very much tonight. Everybody be safe, and as we always say, make sure you're wearing your mask, use that hand sanitizer, have a great evening, and go Hawks!
Mr. Brown, you looked really nice on TV. In those commercials.